Evening everyone, we'll call the Public Attorney and Regular City Council meeting on Tuesday, November 13th to order at this time. We invite anyone who wishes to join council as we rise for the application of the vote of which is the Council of Sherman.
First prayer, most gracious and perfect heavenly Father, we ask Lord that you guide and direct us just as we do the city's business. We pray that your son, Jesus Christ, will be honored and worshipped in a wonderful and unique way the upcoming season. It is in the name of Jesus that I pray.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the people. Okay, this time the chair will entertain a motion waiver and approve the minutes of October 19, 2018, regular city council meeting and the October 31st, 2018, special city council meeting. Any discussion here, your honor, may I receive the pardon of standing up?
Aye.
Close by me, guys have it. Moving on to the moment we've all been waiting for, the Hartsfield National Ozone Team is here with head coach, soon to probably be collegiate head coach.
Dad?
Either you turned down the Browns job or Dabo did, I don't know which team it was.
I wish not to have.
So, Coach, Coach bring your staff and more importantly-
Bring your staff and my staff. Good evening, everyone.
Happy evening.
Thank you for having us here tonight.
Yeah.
All right, come on, guys. Well, as you just heard, my name's Trey Gibson, and I was the manager of the coaching staff that consisted of Mr. Bruce Douglas, Mr. Kirk Askins, and I'm Terry Weekly, who's not here, and Brandon McKinney is the scorekeeper. We're happy to introduce these incredible young men, Hartsfield National Team, that were the 2018 South Carolina Ozone State Champions. Would you step forward a little bit when I call your names? Number eight, Drew Andrews. Number 11, Andrew Askins. Number five, McHenry Douglas, who is not here, practicing basketball. Number two, Ace Gibson.
Woo!
Number one, Wes Hadley. Number 24, Nathan Harry. Number 12, Andrews Meadows. Number six, Trion McCarland, who is playing basketball, too. Number nine, Dawson McKinney. Twenty-one, Grayson Weekly.
Yay!
Number four, Cole Wimber, who lives in Texas now. And number 14, Evan Young. Next, over to Mr. Bruce Douglas, since he is such a great storyteller.
Yeah, I'm the designated team talker. I'm sure these guys are tired of me by now, but what I want to tell you, Mayor, Council, these young men here today, they've represented our town individually, our state, very well. There are two moments from our journey through several different tournaments that stick out in my mind where these guys really stood out for more than just their athletic ability and their ability as baseball players. We were in Union, and we beat a team from Seneca by a football score. It was either 28 or 29 to 10. Normally, when you have games like that, when they end, there's a little animosity, you know, maybe some things happen during the game that didn't go so well, but not these guys. We eliminated Seneca, they were done for the year, they were going home, they were upset after the game, and after they shook hands, all the kids, all the coaches were on the field. It looked like a backyard barbecue, everybody was talking, a couple of their kids were upset and crying, and our guys were listening to them. And as coaches, that's something that's been a lie to us. Then later on, we were playing for the Tournament of Champions, where we got that nice trophy you see there down in the corner, we were playing Sumner in a best-of-three series, and Sumner beat us in the first game, we battled back and won the next two, and when the game was over, I'll be honest, I was standing right beside Trey and dug out, and I was kind of looking forward to a spectacle on the field of the kids celebrating and jumping around, and, you know, that's what I expected to happen when you win a state championship. It looked like business as usual, game was over, they walked over, set the buzz down, shook hands, and that was that. And that's what it was for these guys, it was business as usual, they expected to win, they went out and did it, backs were to the wall, and they came through and won two big games, and we went up to Wilmington, North Carolina, to play in the Dixie Youth World Series. It was a very good summer with these young men.
Scott, I'm Kirk, you want to add anything there?
I've covered it.
Like I said, I'm the designated team talker, I can talk about these guys forever. I got a voice before me. Okay, yeah? Just by chance, if y'all are a real close team, do y'all know what kind of shampoo number 14?
I get more mine.
Mr. Young, I had just as much hair as you, just know that's a loss. Listen, guys, we are so proud of what you've done in representing the city, and we want to say congratulations and thank you, thanks for coming, can't wait for all of you to start at the University of South Carolina. Right, Ace?
Thank you. That's nice. Good job. Good job.
Absolutely. Thank you all for coming. You guys want to hold, who wants to hold this? Wes? It's a little big, you want to grab it? Ah.
Hey, this guy holding the trophy threw a no-hitter in the state tournament. And he set the record for most strikeouts in the state tournament, was 34.
Thank you, guys. All right, so that's it, that's all the champions we have in the school, right?
Is that not all? So, I'm sorry, are you all tour group? Well, it's good to have you all. So, our second set of champions, come on up.
They getting better looking.
Coach, if you want to tell us about your season?
Sure, first of all, Councilor, Mayor, thank you for having the team here. I'm Coach O'Connor, I'm the Athletic Director over at the Governor's School, and for the last couple of weeks, I've also been the head volleyball coach because we had a coaching change. Well, these young ladies represent our volleyball team, we're missing a couple because they were at other practices and hitting the books, but the interesting thing is on this Saturday, these young ladies took me to Lexington to the state championship and then won it for me, and no one, no one in state South Carolina thought we were going to make it past the upper state championship in Dixie. If you've never been to Dewest to play them in something, it is a hostile crowd environment, but the girls pulled together and they went 5-0 through the playoffs, and then ran the championship against Branchville, good team, way better coached, but Branchville, in the press conference, one of my team captains was there, they thought they were going to win last Wednesday.
Yes, they did.
They were kind of talking down, the girls looked there, and so was the South Carolina High School League press. At the end of the second match, my daddy was watching it at home with my mom, and he texted me and he said, "The announcers just changed their tune." And the ladies went on to win it in four, which is really quite a feat, because as some of you are aware, the Governor's School is a two-year program. Fifty percent of our team will be brand-new next year, and it's that way for all our athletic events. In the last three years, the school has earned nine state championships in Single-A South Carolina High School League, so they're really smart, but they can play.
Your team's at least twice as smart as anybody else.
Everybody I coach is four times smarter than me. I am the dumbest guy in the building, okay? But it's interesting, and a lot of the schools that we play against have a misconception about us, they say we're private, and they say we recruit. We're a public, South Carolina public high school, and kids come there based on their grades. So in a second, I'm going to have the ladies introduce themselves, and tell them what your favorite class is at school. Let's show them who you're the team captain, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone, as Coach said, I'm one of the team captains, my name is Lane Scapana. Like he said, I came to nerd school for the academics, there was no athletic recruiting for me, but one of my favorite classes, and one of the best things about Governor's School is that you get to specialize in your academic interests, and this semester, I've been taking anatomy, which is a wonderful prerequisite for a pre-med track that I want to follow in college, and I'm very interested to be taking neuroscience next semester.
Hi, my name's Grace Boxo, and I really like chemistry.
Good for you, girl. My name is Lane Keenan, I do not like chemistry, but my favorite subject is biology, so starting last year, I really honed in on that, and I took botany, which was awesome, I really love botany now, and I'm pursuing an independent study in that next semester where I hopefully will get to take part in partially co-teaching the class and partially taking an experimental part of it, and I'm also right now taking anatomy and physiology, which I am controlling a lot, and I plan on taking neuroscience.
I'm Tori Batzis, and my favorite class is quantitative financial analysis, which is a financial analysis.
I don't know how to follow that.
My name's Ciara Jensen, and my favorite class is just regular old math.
Hi, my name is Kayla Kelly, as previously stated, anatomy is one of my favorite classes as well, and I'm also taking neuroscience next semester as well as genetics.
I'm Abby Benson, my favorite subject is chemistry.
I'm Houston Taylor, I like computer science.
I'm Shelby Vanderhoof, and I like engineering and chemistry, equal.
I'm Lena Mann, and like Shelby, I also enjoy my engineering class, she's my partner, we just finished 3D printing and programming a claw machine, and I'm currently doing a project with the computer science, one of the computer science teachers where I'm coding an RPG, but the user interface is all in French.
Where are y'all from?
I'm Amika Merchant, and I also enjoy anatomy and biology.
Now, the interesting thing, when the girls aren't in athletics, and I go to their presentations, engineering, chemistry, biology, I don't know, clearly, I have no idea what they're talking about, so they try to smarten up the coach a little bit, but the uniqueness of it is, like I said, the two-year program, almost every athlete in the double school is a two-season athlete. Currently, we have 275 or 76 children in residence at the school. Of that 276, right nowadays, 167 of them are actively participating in a varsity athletic program that the school supports. We get great support from both our professors, especially from our administrators, you know, they understand that one of the big contributors to academic excellence is that our kids have an outlet, and, you know, they provide the same focus and effort in the classroom that makes them so good in there, they bring that focus and effort to their sport, and it really showed on Saturday. It shows every time you see that one of our teams take the field, but have you seen the young ladies play on Saturday against a team and a crowd that had been in the state finals, the state championship, eight out of the nine last years? Branchville beat us two years ago, they beat us in the Class A championship. We didn't make it last year, but these ladies decided by, you know, "We're going to do it, Coach." And mid-season, they get a new coach, so they had to teach me volleyball, and they're like, "Coach, you can't do that, that's illegal," I just scream at them, "I'm the coach, I can do what I want." It doesn't work that way, Coach. But, you know, so, you know, if you want to have fun next year, come to any Hartsfield High School game where we're competing, because it's a great rivalry, it's good-natured, soccer, basketball, volleyball, those are some of the best games in town. So, I appreciate your time, and I really thank you, Mr. Mayor, for honoring the team and that you represented Hartsfield.
Truth be told, Bob and I play in a church league on Sunday, we thought this would be a really good chance for us to recruit off of it.
Maybe correctly, I think you better ask.
Sunday's a big study day, isn't it? Listen, ladies, we are so proud of what you've done, absolutely amazing, only are you the best minds in the state, but apparently, you're the best athletes in the state, so congratulations on that. I wanted to thank you all for coming, I did want to introduce our guest, Hector Flores, who's in the back, who y'all all know is the head of the school. And John Shannon, who's in the back, who's head of my security detail.
The ladies' trophy is in what we used to call the North Lobby, but it's now known as the GSSM Hardware Store. There's a lot of trophies, a lot of trophies on those shelves that are earned in athletics, and on the other side, there's two and a half times as many academic awards. So if you want to look at silver, come to the North Lobby, because they get it in both. So again, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Do one with Jessica, girl.
No, you're part of the group.
I got a smile.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you all, congratulations.
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 Did he take any of those classes?
You like it, like literally. Sorry, you had to take it.
What is this issue?
It's math, I like to eat lunch, that's the subject I like, lunch.
I'm still like, what's this?
Breakfast, but not lunch.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Jerome, we're on a tight schedule, so get your flicking finger ready, we're going to jump right into Jerome's presentation, and welcome, glad to have you.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. So I know I don't have much time, so I'm going to just focus on the motivation.
Thank you for coming, Jerome.
I'll focus on the motivation.
You got to compete with the world champs.
That's amazing, that's hard to follow up, but it's just a reminder of the amazing opportunities we have here in Hartsfield. I'll start my presentation with highlighting some of the amazing academic opportunities that we have in Hartsfield. So through our own program, the PULSE program, we have classes and opportunities such as molecular biology, engineering courses that are partnerships with Sunoco, we have an aviation course where our students actually go to the airport and learn everything you need to learn to basically get your private pilot license, all they're lacking at this point is their airtime. And we have robotics engineering, last year, we partnered with Anderson Animal Hospital to provide an anatomy course, and let me just back up a little bit and say, all these courses are hosted at Hartsfield High School, so these are Hartsfield High School students you see in these pictures, and these are also Hartsfield High School, they're not in the PULSE program, but they're in the IB program. And the commonality of all these wonderful academic opportunities that I've noticed over the seven years, seven and a half now, that I've been serving our community and education, is that our academic success stories do not reflect demographics of our town. When we look at those pictures, what we see is a disparity, basically, of an imbalance of the amount of resources being dedicated to a very small bandwidth of our community, where we don't have those same resources being allocated evenly across the field. Your track and your trajectory is very much a product of where you're zoned at the elementary school level, and then once you get to high school or middle school, which we're one high school in this town, it's a product of what program on track that you're in, so we see a lot of imbalance there. One of the things I'll mention before I get to flipping through some other pie chops very quickly, is when we talk about the imbalance, I know a lot of our minds immediately go to the race divide, right, and we look at this, okay, we're talking black-white imbalance, but I want to bring this back and make sure we see that there's a bigger picture here, because sometimes when you're talking about underrepresented, underserved, or marginalized, that could be delayed readers, that could be English language learners, that could be our rural community, that could be families of poverty, and we can go on and on and on. The trouble is, we don't collect data on those groups at the level that we collected across the ratio of socioeconomic lines, so those things are not as easy to quantify, but rest assured, or maybe not assured, that those disparities do exist across different lines. You know, I often mention that when I was at Georgia Tech working at the Office of the President, we would do studies that were based on zip code, and we could see the disparities there, but you can't liken that to here because we're Hartsfield, all right? One zip code, so we can't have that type of study, but we can use the information that we're required by law to provide to the state and see some of these disparities. And now, I know I said, I promised I'd sit down, but I got to jump up for this one real quick. So, this top one here is what our district enrollment looks like, TEL is our white students, and TAN is our black students, and it's about 50-50 as you would expect in our town, we're pretty much 50-50 town, but when you start looking at different measures of academic success, you start to see this disparity, you start to see this imbalance. It only gets more exaggerated the more prestigious the program is, so now we're looking at IB programs, full diploma, graduation marshals, et cetera. That disparity and imbalance only flips the other way when we start talking about behavior issues.
What's the bottom right?
So that's expulsion hearings, all right? If you go back to the other one, you know, you see 50-50, top left, that's our enrollment, gifted and talented, calculus enrollment goes a sway in one way, out-of-school suspension is swayed the other way. So again, we're just focusing on these disparities, if you just aggregate the data even more and start looking at, well, how are black males performing in our school? IB program has 191 students, there are two black males in that program. Out of those IB candidates, there are no IB candidates, only one out of 73 have taken calculus over the past three years, and you can see again, these numbers are going to be very low, until we get to something that's behavior and nature, expulsion hearing, out of 68 expulsion hearings last year at Hartsfield High School, 31 were black males specifically. So, while I'm not showing you all of this, and again, we have more disparities based on ELA scores and so on and so forth, I'm showing you all this because what we're looking to provide is school choice, what we're looking to provide is another option for education in Hartsfield. Right now, there's a monopoly, if you want public education in Hartsfield, you've got one option, the Stoneton County School District. We're not here to despair Stoneton County School District, we're just saying that our families deserve another option. If you feel like this is not working for you, whatever category you fall in of being marginalized, underrepresented, or underserved, you deserve another option. I'll close with this, and then I'll open with questions, giving up to questions. I liken, and some of you have heard this presentation before, but I liken the school district to the cruise ship that you see in this picture. So, everyone likes the nice seat of cruise ship, right? You have economy of scale, you have probably two or three pools on there, movie theater, show, and so on and so forth. I liken the charter school to one of these yachts you see on the side. While it's smaller, and it takes on water more quickly, takes on adversity in a different way than a cruise ship will, its size allows it to be more maneuverable, more responsive to the individual needs of its passengers. If you're one of 10,000 passengers on a cruise ship, there's only but so much we can do to accommodate your specific needs and interests, and things along those lines academically or otherwise. But being one of those yachts, again, we will pride ourselves on being able to partner with families that want intimacy level, to be attentive to students and their needs on a more intimate level, and we're excited to bring school choice at the K-12 level to Hartsfield, South Carolina in the fall of 2020. So I could go on and on, and then I'd be recommended, about what specific things that we have in our school in terms of our mission and key components, but as you've all probably seen already via email, I've invited you to continue this conversation with me individually, and I'd love to do so if you're so available. For now, I'd like to give you an opportunity for questions before I-
So what needs from the city that you have in helping you be more successful?
So, one specific need that we have right now in our application process is basically letters of support, right? So just to say that as the city, we see the need for more educational opportunities for our families, and part of our application just documents that need from various organizations, I have met with Eldery, and Kowanus, and the Ministers Alliance, and Coker College, and so on and so forth. Just to lay out what I've done today and say, this is what our intent is, in the future, we'd be excited to partner with many of these entities to provide this great opportunity for our families, and part of our application process for the state to review is to say, do you have the capacity to do what you're saying you'll do, and do you have the support of your city and its organizations in doing so? So a resolution of support would be wonderful, and then from there, once we get our approval in April, we can talk again and see what specific tendencies we'll have as an organization.
Anybody have anything else?
Yes?
Do you know right now what grade a student takes courses a year in advance of the grade they're in?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, an eighth grade, or, yes, an eighth grade, that takes ninth grade subjects, a student that never actually goes to 12th grade, never is a senior, but graduates in the 11th grade, do you have any idea?
No, I don't.
It's just something I'm asking-
So one, one specific need that we have right now in our application process is basically letters of support, right? So just to say that as the city, we see the need for more educational opportunities for our families. And part of our application just documents that need from various organizations. I have met with Marguerite and Kulanis and the Ministers Alliance and Coker College, so on and so forth. Just to lay out what I've done today and say, this is what our intent is. In the future, we'd be excited to partner with many of these entities to provide this great opportunity for our families. And part of our application process for the state to review is to say, do you have the capacity to do what you're, you're saying you'll do? And do you have the support of your city and its organizations in doing so? So a resolution of support would be wonderful. And then from there, once we get our approval in April, we can talk again and see what specific tendencies we'll have as an organization. Anybody have anything else? Yes.
Do you know right now what, at what grade a student takes courses a year in advance of the grade that they're in?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, an eighth grade or, or, yes, an eighth grade. That takes ninth grade subjects. A student that never actually goes to 12th grade, never is a senior, but graduates in the 11th grade. Do you have any idea?
No, I don't.
It's, it's just something I'm asking because it's what I need. And I'm wondering if children still challenge themselves to not just do what's in front of them, but can I do what, what I'm facing?
So you're, you're talking about the ability and opportunity for students to work ahead? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? So it's very little, to be honest. And that was the premise of the program that I direct, the Puls program, why it was put in place seven years ago. It was unapologetically put in place to cater to the top five or 10% of that academic threshold. Because what tends to happen is we're so focused on that bottom or sometimes the middle that the kids who are already achieving great things academically, they get ignored, right? So a lot of times, those challenges are not available for them. So that's part of what the Puls program, these courses you saw at the beginning of my presentation. But that's why those were designed and created and implemented so that we can offer opportunities to these kids who otherwise really end up in this situation where they're just waiting for college, right? Because there's no more challenge for them at that middle school or high school level. So to bring this back to the charter school, one of the nice things, one of the points you would see in one of, actually it's right there, perfect time, small classroom size. So all of our classrooms will be 15 to 20 students cap. And what that allows you to do is really give the teacher the ability and capacity to focus on differentiated learning so that each kid in the class is getting specifically what they need and not being taught as a collective. And there are a whole bunch of more wonderful things we'll be doing, but again, I look forward to talking to you about those individually.
Jerome, can you talk for just a brief minute about the benefits of having a year-round academic calendar, particularly for these students that you're talking about?
Councilman, damage, you know, good and well, I can't do that briefly. All right, so we are a year-round school. And what that means is we're still 180 days, but it's spread out differently over the calendar. You can think about it as two months on, two weeks off, right? And we still give them a break. It's about six weeks instead of about three months. And so many advantages of that. I'll try to highlight a couple of them. One, one of the big issues, especially with families of poverty who can't afford summer remission programs, is the summer slide. So you basically have a lot of content knowledge loss over those three months to where the first two or three months of school are now remediation and review. So we eliminate that by having a shorter summer break. The two months on, two weeks off, those two weeks are not your traditional spring break type breaks. They're, they're programmatic intervals, similar to actually what we do at the Governor's School when we have a break in the middle of the school year, like in January. So where we expect those children to still be in our building. A lot of our children will be from families who are working class families who can't afford, they do not want another thing to manage in terms of their child being home every two months for two weeks. So our school will still be open. We'll have camps during those programmatic breaks. So where it's a two-week break, so each kid rotates between two different camps. One week camp here, one week camp there. And those hinge on partnerships in the community. So those camps might be partnered with the Y MCA, they might be with Kamea, they might be with the Governor's School students facilitating those wonderful volleyball students that we saw a moment ago could facilitate camps. I've already met with Dr. Tracy Parkinson, who's the director of strategic partnerships at Coker, and he is thrilled of the potential of all of his departments. You know, he almost fell out of his chair thinking, "We could have athletic camps, we could have theater camps, psychology camps, biology camps." I was just thinking, "Hey, how can your education school get involved?" He said, "No, my whole school's getting involved in this." So that's another advantage of that, that programmatic approach to the year-round calendar. Teachers love it because it reduces burnout. They also get to go to Disney World on, you know, non-peak times, right? I mean, there's a lot of those things.
So as far as your schedule is concerned, when would you be asking for a resolution to be presented?
Our, our application is due Feb. 1. So I would like to have it before then to include in our application.
Okay, so I guess we, let's go ahead and set a committee to review that and kind of go through the finer details. And I'd ask the general to chair that and Trey, or Trey, if you'll have a preference, Trey. And I'll sit in with you guys. Cool. So if you'll get with one of us, we'll set a timeline, go ahead and get this nailed down and that'd be great, have someone to present next meeting.
Thank you for your time, Councilman.
Thank you. Good to see you. Okay, next on our agenda, management updates?
I'll be great. Just, I need you all at 6 o'clock on Thursday night for downtown tree lighting and everything else.
Rain or shine?
It's only a 10% chance of rain that night. 90% during the day. We're going to be fine.
Why do you get a, it's not fair?
We got it.
Thank you. Items only consented, general, be received as information without objection to stand improvement of the Gallow. Unfinished business, item six on our agenda is public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4353. The manager will publish.
Providing for and approving additional amendments to an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Restructuring of the Water Works and Service System by Adding Water Park Enterprise Authorizing Issues and Sale Combined System Revenue Bonds of the City of Hartsfield, South Carolina and Other Matters Related There."
Okay, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation of the city manager. This time, the chair will open. Public hearing, maybe just hit it once and do that again. Governor, public hearing, if you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4353, if you'd rise, state your name and address for the record. Please come to the front and limit your comments to two minutes or less. And here, there are, our chair will move to close the public hearing and entertain the motions to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4353.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by an aye. The ayes have it. Moving into new business, item seven on the agenda is Resolution 11-18-01, a resolution to authorize municipal association of South Carolina to act as claimant agency for the collection of debt on behalf of the city of Hartsfield in accordance with the Set Off Debt Collection Act. Is there such a motion? Is there any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by an aye. The resolution carries. Item eight on the agenda is first reading of ordinance 4354. The manager will publish.
Permission to be approved, the recovery of collection costs as part of the liquid debt collected pursuant to the Set Off Debt Collection Act.
Hey, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation of the city manager of the ordinance 4354. This time, the chair will entertain the motions to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4354.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Madam?
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that, oh, I want to know...
Are striking or move changes?
No. What are we, is this for everything overall or is this for something just in specific? Just like tax is our problem?
Madam?
Yeah. This is specifically for court funds and utility payments. And we submit all of that. Marguerite heads it up and she does a fabulous job and then Rill handles the fines portion of it.
Okay, nothing further? Nothing further? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by an aye. The ayes have it. Item nine on our agenda is first reading of ordinance 4355. The manager will publish.
Release the properties at 145 and 147. What's going on? Avenue to the Governor's School for Science and Math.
Okay, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation of ordinance 4355. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt ordinance 4355.
Second. Is there any discussion?
We're good.
So we're good? Okay. If there's no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by an aye. The ayes have it. Item 10 on our agenda is first reading of ordinance 4356. The manager will publish.
It's ordinance to amend Hartsfield City Code A 37, sign in advertising devices, section 13, to allow murals.
Motion to adopt. This is why we sit you right here so we can keep it close and long as you go. All right, you've heard the reading by title on the presentation of the city manager of ordinance 4356. This time, the chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by an aye. The ayes have it. First, first read. I am excited to see that mural of you on the side of the wall. 2000 to 2029. All right, let's see. That's item 10, okay. So the chair will entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act, section 30-4-70, paragraph A sub-paragraph 1, for the discussion of appointments for architectural view board and ex officio appointments to various boards, commissions and committees. Is there such a motion? Any discussion? Hearing in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Close by an aye. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening.